I'm going to call to order the September 5th meeting of the Harris Township Board of Supervisors, like September 8th, I'm sorry. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. All right, thank you. Okay, first up, Susan comments, members of the public are invited to comment on any item not on the agenda. Please limit your time to five minutes. If you can wrap it up quicker than that, we'd all be happy, we can go home. Comments and items, specific items on the agenda should be deferred until that point in the meeting. So anybody have any comments about something that is not on our agenda? Okay, thank you. Oh, we didn't, I'm sorry, we'll just get out of order here a little bit. Yeah, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from July 15th work session, August 11, a public hearing, August 11, regular meeting, and August 18, special meeting.
Some of...
Oh, second.
Okay, I have a motion of second. Any comments on the minutes? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving that set of minutes, please say aye. Aye, pose no. We approve the minutes. New agenda items. Okay, so we can bring up, anybody have anything to add to the agenda? Okay, moving right along. Habitat for Humanity.
Good evening, my name is Stephanie Foster, I'm the executive director of Habitat for Humanity. I've had the opportunity to serve the organization for the last seven and a half years. Nigel, good to see you this evening. Thank you guys for allowing me to come today. Thank you Todd and Mark for offering the invitation for me to come and speak today. I wanted to also thank you whenever we had the closing for the property that we purchased back here, the warmth with which Nigel welcomed us to the community. So I genuinely appreciate that. And Tracy, I know you recently donated to the restore, so thank you to that. So I had the opportunity, I was actually on vacation, I had the opportunity in a little bit later to watch the CNET video of the August Board of Supervisors meetings where a couple of public comments were made regarding questions about the Habitat for Humanity project, right in the backyard here. And, you know, concerns were raised about the historic nature of Bollesburg and the, you know, the historic nature being decreased with Habitat coming into the neighborhood. And then also, there was a statement made about the decreased values of homes. So, all these things are kind of, well, the historic's a little different, but all of these things are usually questions whenever Habitat comes into a neighborhood. And so I don't usually get the opportunity to come out to speak to a group like this. So I'm really excited to be here this evening, you know, just talk a little about us as an organization. I promise, Mark, I do have slides, I will keep them quick. There's pictures, so that makes them a little longer. But I love coming out and talking about organization, and obviously, I will talk about the project in your backyard here. So again, Mark, if you want to go ahead and flip, I have, I have it up on my phone here. So we were actually established in 1983, Habitat for Humanity in Center County was the first Habitat affiliate in Pennsylvania. So we've been around a little over forty years, a really cool organization, grassroots, like I said, I've been here seven and a half years, so it's been a learning curve. I say there's always something new for me. Our first home was dedicated in 1985 in Bellefonte. We actually had an office here in Bollesburg for quite a while. So our program has built, repaired, or renovated over a hundred and twenty houses in that forty-year history. And our organization, if there's one thing that most people know about us, it's volunteers. That is what people know about us. So I want to take some time to just go over the things that what people might know about us and what they don't, and then I'll lean into our project. So what most people kind of know is that we provide safe and affordable housing for income-qualified homeowners. So what that looks like is we serve an audience of forty to eighty percent area median income. So what I want you guys to think about that, a household of four, one earner, two earners, whatever that is, usually that income from forty to eighty percent is about forty thousand to eighty-five thousand. So I think most of us could think about a single earner or two earners, well within that range, many people that we know within the community that would meet those guidelines. And our program, we utilize volunteers to build our homes. So each year, we have about twelve thousand hours from volunteers. Usually each home, from a traditional build standpoint, takes about two thousand hours from volunteers. This project, again, is a little different. So it might be a little different in those numbers if the house is a little larger, if the house is a little smaller, if there's nuances. But usually about two thousand hours is what volunteers give to our organization. We do sometimes have donated materials and labor. We have a really good partner in Tom Hauschnect with House wires. He will go out and he will work with community partners and get a bunch of electricians, and you'll see them out there, like, come the coldest day of the year, and they'll wire a house in six hours for us. And so they're skilled electricians, but they donate their time. And then we also have donated materials sometimes, or discounted materials, just depending on where we can source them from. That's not every time, that's sometimes. So on our next slide, we, I wanted to just give some of the facts of why Habitat and affordable housing is so important in Center County. There you go. Our average list price, I actually just pulled this from Center County Association Realtor Today, July of 2025, our average sales price was four hundred and eighty-seven dollars, eighty-seven thousand dollars. I don't know how many of you have bought a house recently, but if you haven't, that probably wasn't what you paid. Our median family income, this is from HUD and Census Information, is about a hundred thousand. Rent roughly is twelve hundred dollars a month, and I will say, depending on where you live in the community, that's really low, and I would say it's pretty average other places. So our homeownership rate in Center County, which I think is also important to this conversation, our program again focuses on homeownership, is our homeownership rate in Center County is five percent less than the rest of the state. And then, again, I think when you think about the numbers of financial impact in our community, fifty-five percent of our homes in Center County listed for sale are over three hundred thousand dollars. So if you're thinking about affordable homeownership, there's not a lot out there for folks. So what most people don't know about our organization, a lot of people think it's a free house. It is not a free house. Our homeowners typically pay a thirty-year mortgage. If finances allow, we will slightly shorten that, but typically we stick to a thirty-year mortgage. Our homeowners, home buyers, I like to say, also commit three hundred and fifty hours of their own time and energy to the home. So that can be working on their own home, that can be working on someone else's home, that can be volunteering at our restore, or at any of our events across the community. Next slide. So this is actually a project, that's not a project, this is actually a project that we completed. All right, so this is actually a project that we did recently. This was completed in 2023 in Phillipsburg. The house on the left is a bladed property that we were approached about. We initially thought we were going to renovate it, and then my construction supervisor, Larry Lucas, he went up there with me and we were like, well, no, we're not, we're not doing anything with that. And we replaced it with this safe and affordable home on the right-hand side. Next slide, please. Then this just shows, this is a property in Center Hall that we did in 2024. This is just the kitchen. So we work hard to make our homes energy efficient and lovely at the same time. Again, this is, I believe this is a house in Bellefonte. This is a home that we completed there in 2022. So additionally, just very, very briefly, another element of our organization is repairs. So we worked with Center County's Office of Aging over the last two years to work on repairs, and we serve folks in that, all throughout the county. So we did homes in Bollesburg, homes in the borough, homes out in Snowshoe, homes in Bellefonte, I mean, you name it in Center County, we did everything from ADA upgrades to, as you can see, with ramps. We installed insulation in homes, windows, doors, you name it, we touched it in homes to make them safer, folks to still live in them. So, very briefly. And again, this is a home that we worked on that, you know, the homeowner actually reached out to us not wanting the outside of the house done. They weren't concerned about that, they were concerned about some plumbing indoors, and we said, well, if your roof is caving in, and your siding has gaping holes in it, we can't in good conscience worry about the plumbing issue inside. So we tackled that project. So, what everybody wants to hear about, we are partnering for the project on the backside of your lot here, for a 3D-printed home. This is concrete, it is not building blocks, it is printed concrete. I'll show, I'll show a picture of what that looks like in a minute. We started this conversation several years ago, Ex-Hab, actually, I'm going to jump just out of my little order here. Ex-Hab is the company that we're partnering with. They are headquartered out of College Township in the High Bay. They have another name for the facility, I call it the old Corning Building. That's where they have been building and doing some of their test projects and things of that sort. They are currently in Alaska, doing some projects with the Department of Defense up there. They were born out of Penn State. They approached us about tackling some affordable housing and kind of giving a demonstration with a Habitat project to build some awareness for them and also for us as an organization. So when we started this conversation, we were looking for a lot. You know, a nice flat lot is always our best option to build. Anybody who's built before, that's what you like to see. Public water sewer just makes it even better. We got, we got a little bit of that. So when we saw the lot available in Harris Township, one of the really important things for us was that we were within Center Region code. So Center Region code is known to be tough, and if you've talked to any of these folks in the room that have ever worked with code, they know Center Region code is tough, and they're going to push you hard to make sure that you join the best project that you can. The team there has said we're building some of the best houses in Center County, and I commit that to the passion of our staff members and our volunteers. So Harris Township falls within that Center Region code, so we have been working closely to get our permits submitted and completed, and all of these inspections. So I'm happy to share that last Wednesday, our last corrections were made on our permits, and they are approved. I don't know if Larry laminated and put it back there on the sign, but it is back there, so we will start here soon. So our groundbreaking will happen next, in about two weeks, a week or so, I'm sorry, I'm a little off on my dates. Our team from EB Paving will come out and install some of the lines that are needed and start the excavation on the site. We will host a groundbreaking. Obviously, we don't want to do that when they're there digging, but it's an opportunity for us to celebrate the fact that we're building a home in Harris Township when we haven't built one in this community before. So our homeowner, some folks from Ex-Hab, some folks from Habitat, and members of the community will be attending that. Our intention is to kind of control the chaos, because we know that people are very curious. What does a 3D-printed house look like? What does, what does it mean? How does, how's it going to feel and look and all of those things? So we know that people are curious, and we know that people want to come out and they want to see it. And we want to do that safely, in a way that's best for everybody. So our intention is actually in partnership with Center County Association Realtors. They received a grant that helps us with some education. So we will be coming out and we'll be hosting learning sessions. Our intention is to do a variety of them, focused on different audiences. Obviously, friends and family is one. We want our volunteers and our homeowner to come out, elected officials, municipal leaders such as yourselves, to kind of learn a little bit more about the project, the product, all of those things, and our organization, and again, greater in-depth into what affordable housing needs here in Center County are. And then we'll also go through our local, our HVAC vendors, our electrical vendors, all of those things, those folks in the community that are interested in seeing what this project looks like for them as a future of technology. And then our length of construction, I will say, usually it takes us about nine to ten months to build a home. It just depends, you know, weather always plays a game there. I mean, did anybody see the summer where we had a lot of rain, and then we have had no rain? So it really just depends on weather, but usually about nine to ten months. And again, our, our team comes out and our volunteers and our vendors do an amazing job for us. So, next, I think is an important thing. So a lot of people think about 3D-printed homes, which are pretty common in Texas and other parts of the world. Texas has actually been doing a lot. A lot of people think about it in this gantry-style printer. So what that means is this big structure that goes over top of the print site, and then they change it and they move it and everything. That is different from what Ex-Hab has created. Again, they're born out of Penn State, so of course, advancing and changing the technology is really important. So what you won't see is something like this, but this is what, if you were looking up other technology, this is what you would probably see with what their build site would look like. Mark, if you want, go ahead. So this is actually the product that is out at the High Bay in College Township. I always describe it to people when I'm trying to visually say what it looks like, as a little mini excavator. It's about the size, I would say, you know, maybe of your table, little, obviously, it's a little taller, and it basically drives around the site. That's, that's the benefit of it. It's smaller, it's more mobile, and that is what it will look like, the project. The specific item that the Ex-Hab team has focused on is that little gray thing on the end with the white tip, that is the smart nozzle which distributes the material that will be printed. So then, this is just a sample, I just took it from the Ex-Hab website. So this is the exterior wall. It's a sample piece of what the exterior wall will look like. This will allow for insulation and rebar and all the mechanical and electrical to be put down and that is desired to be put down and through. So this is what it will look like during the printing process, rough, roughly. So this is a project, actually, in Williamsburg, Virginia. So the affiliate in Colonial Williamsburg and Peninsula, Habitat affiliate printed, I believe they did four homes, not with the same organization that we are partnering with, so they use that gantry style. But this just shows roughly what it looked like on the exterior during the process. And then this is the final product of the home in Colonial Williamsburg and Peninsula. There's actually one right next to it, but this was the first one that they did. So if you don't know, Habitat homes are simple. They are not ornate, they are not complex. The mission is safe and affordable housing. So typically, they are three-bedroom, one and a half bath. That's very intentional. We want to build a home that somebody can start in, and if their family composition changes, you know, maybe they can grow in the home, or maybe they need to take the next step. That's the point of our, our organization, is to allow people to either stay or to grow. We really focus on aging in place. So when people walk into our homes, always, and again, we'll have an open house when the house is complete, but always, people are like, your bathrooms are so big, your hallways are so wide, because we want that turn radius for folks, should they need to age in place in the home. We try to build our homes in a way so that either ramps can be put on very easily, or that they're very easy, like this style, this will be slab-on-grade home, there will not be a basement in it, but, so that folks can easily access the home as they age. So whether it's somebody living in their home that's in their twenties, or somebody that's living in their home that's in their eighties, we want them to be able to stay in this home if that is their desire. I don't know that I have anything else. Yeah, that is it. So I'm more than happy to take questions from you guys, or take my seat. As I did say, this is a partnership project. The Center County Housing and Land Trust, Missy Schoonover, their executive director is here tonight. They are the partner on the land part of the project, which means they will hold the land in perpetuity, so it'll be an affordable home for the entire life of the home.
Yes, Diane.
Could you go back?
Come up to the mic.
Just one quick question. When I talked to Larry, he said we were getting just a concrete house.
Correct, that's concrete.
Okay, you're, the details that are very nice in that, can you tell me, well, our house also has the details.
So it's a Habitat home, it's a homeowner's home, it's not our house. So I think that's very important. A lot of times, folks will, you know, they expect Habitat to do things with a home. You know, the grass is too tall, or whatever that might be. I'm very emphatic that this is a homeowner's home. So if there are ever any issues with the home, it is the homeowners. We are simply the builder of the home and the mortgage holder of the home. Our mortgage companies would never call us and tell us to make changes to the home. So, we, those details are still being worked out and still completed. You know, we have already submitted all of our plans to the code office and they are completed. Larry has ordered trusses, I don't believe he has ordered the windows. Really, if I look at those, that, those details of the home, there's a little bit of brickwork on the bottom. The lot down here is more long and narrow, so this is a wider home, the home that we will have. Habitat homes have to have a covered porch, it's one of the requirements of our greater organization, Habitat for Humanity International. So it will be longer, with a very similar roofline on the front there.
So, your website talks about how you try to blend with the neighborhood. May I say, I'm the person who you heard do one of the presentations, and the other person is here also. First, my daughters built houses in Georgia, and I have a picture of her with Jimmy Carter. So she worked for two years for Habitat. My question, my comment, when I got up to present, and I'm sorry if it was misconstrued, was the fact that we're interested in going, some people are interested in going forward with setting up some kind of design committee. And the question, the comment that was brought up was comparing if this house was built in Bellefonte versus the house being here. We have no design standards, they do, in Bellefonte.
There was no home built in Bellefonte. Well, no, so Larry, Larry Lucas, our construction supervisor, serves as, he, he's a, he's a repairs, he has done construction in this community for over forty years. So Larry had the opportunity to do a work, actually, on Ralph Stewart's property. Ralph served as the township manager, or the borough manager for Bellefonte for many years. So he worked on that project, so he's very familiar with HARB and that organization and their requirements. So I believe he was, his sentiment was about the project that he worked on for Ralph in the community. So that, knowing the, the design requirements for doing the repairs, that project. This would be actually the first 3D-printed home in Pennsylvania.
Okay, well, you did have Bellefonte up there, but anyway, regardless of that, our whole purpose was not to, in any way, diss Habitat houses. Our purpose was to discuss the fact that there are many of us that would like to have some type of design group. And when the price, when I mentioned twenty and thirty thousand dollars, that was in no reference to anybody's deep property decreasing, that was never mentioned in there. That was mentioned to point out that things have changed over time, for those of us that have lived here fifty years. So I hope that we're a little bit more, we understand each other a little bit better. We still would like to have a design group review board.
I think it's very important to note that we have our homes appraised, and then, there's, there's a financial lot that I won't go into, but those homes are sold for appraised value. That doesn't mean that our homeowner will pay that full amount, but they are recorded at the recorder of deeds. We found that the properties that we have built recently across the community, whether it be, you know, we have, what are we at, Missy, fifteen properties on Woody Crest Street, fourteen? We have fourteen properties over near Trader Joe's, we have one in Phillipsburg, we have two in Center Hall, that we've done recently, we did four in Bellefonte. Actually, the appraisal and the value of those homes has increased the value of the homes surrounding them.
John Wainwright, resident, and actually a neighbor. So I'd like to know first, I have two questions. One is, what is the name of the company that did your boundary survey on the lot lines?
Mr. John Sepp from Pantera. I don't believe he's here tonight for that purpose, but Pantera.
Pantera did it, okay. Thank you. Was there any attempt to make the, okay, so I heard, and it may be incorrect, that the house won't be painted, or shingled, or anything like that. Is that correct, or?
Well, there's shingles on the home, yes. Shingles are necessary for the roof.
Well, okay, let me put, is there going to be siding, or is the concrete going to be, will it be painted?
That is up to the Ex-Hab team, not us.
Are you saying that Habitat has no control over what color the house is?
We do, but it, the color is...
What, what will be the color?
That is up to the Ex-Hab team.
What is the Ex-Hab team?
The third partner between Habitat, Ex-Hab, and Center County Housing and Land Trust.
How does one contact them to find out what the house will actually look like? I mean, I have to look at this every day.
I think it would be really great if you would be interested in attending those learning informations. The folks from Ex-Hab would be there.
And how do I contact them?
I would assume their website.
Ex-Hab?
Yeah, I don't know it off the top of my head.
So what you're saying is you don't know what it actually is going to look like?
Well, yeah.
Is, will it look like that?
No, because the layout is completely different of the home.
Do you actually have, can you share with us what it actually will look like?
We plan to do that at the learning sessions.
Learning sessions?
Correct.
Okay, so, recognizing that here in Harris Township, we have no standards for what the house actually, as long as it complies with all the ordinances, it could be almost anything, right, gentlemen? That's right.
I believe there's a house on the corner of Chambers Alley that's siding, and, you know, it's fairly modest.
So in other words...
it's fairly modest and half-inch, ninety, ninety, eighty stuff.
To get an idea of what the actual house is going to look like, we should contact the XHAB people.
Well, so the plans have been submitted. The footprint of the house is laid out. The exterior will have somewhat of a stucco look to it, similar to that. We have not determined, the homeowner has not picked their shingle color. We haven't picked the upper, the peak right here. We haven't picked the color.
So we'll have a peak on it?
Correct.
It will have a forward-facing gable?
Yes.
Okay. It's just, so when are these education?
Once the printing starts happening, because we know that folks are going to want to come. I'm sorry, I don't know. I know that folks are going to want to come and see the project.
So the education will take place after the construction starts?
Correct. So, because most people want to come and see the printing. And so we wanted to try to offer an opportunity for folks to come and see the printing and at the same time ask questions to the XHAB folks. And those will be kind of different audiences, because realtors are going to have very different questions than neighbors that are going to have very different questions from electrical folks.
So once again, to the original question, Pantera did the actual surveying of the lot?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else on this, on the board? Questions?
Sure. Because I don't know how this works. What happens if the people want to sell the home? Does it sell for fair value at that point in time or does it have to sell as their covenant on the home?
Ms. Do you actually want to speak to that? Sure. Yep. No. It's a great question. Hi, Ms. Schoonover. I'm the executive director with Center County Housing and Land Trust. Thank you for asking that question, because that is something that I love to talk about. The Center County Housing and Land Trust, we own the land. We will own the land once construction is complete and the home buyer purchases it. For insurance and things, it's easier for Habitat to maintain that for coverage for volunteers. We enter into a land lease with the home buyer that sets how much equity they are able to earn in their home year over year. If they decide to make some capital improvements, we work with them on what's the cap going to be for that, to keep it in that affordable range. If they outgrow the house, they decide they want to move, work takes them somewhere else, then Habitat for Humanity has the first right of refusal to purchase the house back. If Habitat chooses not to exercise their right of first refusal, the land trust then buys it. So then we work to find another income-qualified individual. They do the work. They qualify for the mortgage and then it's with them. They enter into the same land lease and it's a ninety-nine-year lease that restarts with each new homeowner until either Habitat for Humanity ceases to exist, which isn't likely or the land trust does not. So this home, when it is built and it's affordable, unlike other homes that we back in the day would have said were starter homes that were affordable and now they're not affordable, this home will always be affordable for individuals in those particular income ranges. They can't remove it from the program.
And the people, well, the people who move out then gain their equity back?
Yes.
Do they gain their equity and interest on the equity or just their equity?
It's, it's, it's both. It's, yeah, yeah, yeah. And they know all of this. They have legal counsel prior to and they, they understand everything before they go into it. And if, if they won Powerball the next week after they closed on their home, they can still stay in their home. It's their home. They have a mortgage. That's another question we get. Well, my neighbor down the street, they shouldn't have, well, it's their house, but they can't sell it. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item up is Springfield Commons On-Street Parking.
All right. So at the July meeting, the Board of Supervisors received a request from Springfield Commons Homeowners Association to permit on-street parking along the east side of Deering Drive. Prior to the meeting, several Springfield Common residents provided a letter expressing concerns about the requested on-street parking changes. The residents asked that on-street parking not be permitted on Deering Drive or the Homestead Lane-Deering Drive intersection be established as a four-way stop. So since the July meeting, the township's traffic engineer, Rob Watts with McCormick Taylor, reviewed the request to provide on-street parking in the development as well as the requested four-way stop intersection. Mr. Watts concluded that the intersection itself does not meet warrants for an all-way stop and that driveways and intersections will limit the number of potential parking spaces along the east side of Deering Drive. There would be the potential for some parking, but it would be limited. He also noted that the street is narrow, which could require vehicles to yield to oncoming traffic when cars are parked along the roadway. It would have a traffic calming effect. So it would just be something that, you know, motorists would need to be aware of. If the board is interested in considering the request, an amendment to Chapter Eight dash one-point-three-one will need to be prepared in a public hearing scheduled. If such an amendment is approved, signage would be installed to restrict parking near intersections and ensure visibility of moving vehicles on Deering Drive.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this? Board?
Sure, I'll start off. Yeah, I read through this. This seems like we're trying to put a round peg in a square hole. And my only question is, and if I'm not mistaken, if, if somebody has a handicap issue with parking in that, on that street, they can, they can get a parking, a handicap parking space if they apply through us. Is that correct?
Not sure about a handicap, disabled space. I've not actually ever had to deal with a specific space being designated. The only thing we've ever done in the past, if someone's having a special event at their home or what have you, we'll contact the police and let them know not to, to ticket, you know, during that period. I'm not sure. I'd have to look into-
Well, my, my, the reason I ask is we had one lady here when this was proposed that said she would, to get in her house, the number of steps or something that-
They had to do with visitors.
Yeah, and visitors and whatnot. And that was my question is, you know, I, I don't know that we need to. But it sounds like we're not going to get a whole lot of spaces in it anyway. But i, if there was some, for an individual to come request some kind of special parking or any, I, I didn't know if we had that in our ordinance. If, if somebody could, could do that, I don't know if we're allowed to do that or not. But that would be, that would be my, my concern there to, to try to take care of the handicap person. But, but again, I, I don't know that we're going to take care of them by, by approving what, what little bit Rob says we can do. So I, I don't know if it's a futile exercise or not. That's my, that was, that was all I was looking at with it.
Bruce, I do think you have a few public comments.
Okay. Yeah, please.
Hi. I spoke at the last meeting regarding the parking on Deering Drive. I live at one-thirty Deering. I'm in a townhouse in between the intersection of Homestead and the actual community center. And I explained my concern as a resident there, because the way that, the, the properties were designed and with the community center, there was no driveway. So two of us have, the resident at the corner, in my townhouse, we have no driveway. And, and so basically, if somebody comes to my home, the only option I'm hoping that we can come up with is that they could park out in front of my house to come to my house for dinner or lunch and not have to drive all the way down Deering, turn into the community center driveway, come all the way back up to the back of my property and then enter my house through my garage and through a full set of stairs from the garage level up to the main part of the house, which is really not a very appropriate way to greet people coming to your home. Most people wouldn't want, I think, would not want guests come, traipsing through their garages. So basically, I'm hoping that for those of us, those few of us on Deering, between Homestead and the community center that have this issue, that you will grant that parking would be allowed there so that if we do have someone coming to our house, like my daughter, she can't park in front of my house and come into my house without worrying about getting a ticket. And I think it's an inconvenience for all of you and for the office for me to have to call to say, "I've got someone coming for dinner. They need to park in front of my house." Or, "I've got someone coming for lunch or I'm having a meeting at my house and I need a couple of places to park out in front of my house for, for this meeting." I think it's, it's an inconvenience for me. It's an inconvenience for your office. So I'm truly hoping that you'll look at this realistically and say that those of us who have the townhouses on Deering, that if we could have the, the limited parking there, not on a regular basis, obviously, but when we need it, that the parking places would be available for us and we won't have to be making phone calls or worrying about getting our vehicles ticketed. Thank you. Any, any question for me? Leslie Asbury?
Anybody else like to speak to us? Please.
I'm Fred Maroney. I live at one-twenty-two Rubin Way. I also chaired the group that did the analysis for the, for the parking along Deering. The, the one, I want part that I want to add. We talked about the residents that sent a letter in. We actually conducted a community-wide survey and the predominance of that survey was strongly, over two-thirds pointed toward allowing parking. So to simply go on the basis that certain residents, which were a few who were unnamed to us, wrote a letter in, sure, some people are going to oppose it. But the other part of it, a majority of the residents, of which over eighty, nearly seventy-five percent of the residents responded to the survey, responded in an affirmative manner. So I think that that really needs to be brought to the forefront of it's not just a few people that complained. It was a majority that said that they believed it was correct. The other part relative to the width of the street, Homestead, which is perpendicular to Deering, is the same width and there's parking all along Homestead. So either one, you know, if we rationalize it out, either one, we need to discontinue parking along Homestead and have no parking in the neighborhood on-street or look at this in a more favorable manner. So, thank you.
Yes, please.
My name is Christine Coleman and I live on Homestead Drive. Homestead Drive only has parking on one side of the street. It's not both sides of the street. So, you know, it doesn't present as much a problem with the way the street is designed versus the intersection of Deering and Homestead. That is, the issues that occur on Deering Drive, which is the up the hill and down the hill, visibility is impacted by parking on that street at the intersection. And you've already decided that the intersection doesn't require a four-way stop for whatever reason. So the, any parking, whether it's the right or the left side, creates a problem of visibility at the stop signs. You can't see beyond cars that are parked along the Deering Drive. So you can't see what's coming up. You can see what's coming down, that's more likely, but not necessarily what's coming up the street. So.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address us on this topic? I'll, I'll mention that we do not have to and will not allow parking right up to the corner. So if we do this, there will be adequate site distance as calculated by our engineer. Anybody else? So shall we have staff look into putting together an amendment?
I, I'd like to see if, if, what, what Rob would consider approved parking spaces. I mean, if we're only going to get one or two and we need four or five, it's kind of, like I said, it seems like we're putting a round peg in a square hole. But before we start putting a new amendment out, I'd, I'd like to see what the, what the final that can happen there, you know? Go ahead.
Yeah, I can, he didn't calculate the exact number, because we don't typically mark parking spaces on the street. It's just an area is available for parking or it's not. I think from his calculation, it was probably four to six is what he thought with where the driveway locations are. You might be able to get four to six vehicles. Depends on the size of the vehicle, how close they park to one another. Maybe you can get a couple more. It just wasn't a situation where you're going to be adding ten, twenty parking spaces because there are driveways and there's intersections that will have to be protected from parking for visibility reasons.
And would the amendment give us some indication of what we might expect to see?
In terms of number of spaces?
Terms of number or position of, in terms of the position of the zone.
We can certainly provide you with some type of mapping of where we believe the signage would go and define where it would be allowed. And then from there, calculate what we think the number of potential cars could be. Normally, we assume on a twenty-two-foot space for a parallel parking.
Eighteen.
For Penning? It's twenty-two for, yeah. So we could always use that standard to kind of come up with what might be possible if that's something you'd find valuable as part of the, the consideration.
Well, I didn't, you know, if, if, if we go ahead and do the amendment and then we get that and we don't like it, then we'd be turning down the amendment and, and they would be, you know, spending their time putting the amendment together. That's why I did know it would be better to do it ahead of time and then make sure it's exactly what we want before we go to the amendment process. Staff, busy.
We may also just be mo, we may be modifying the amendment after what we see.
That's, that's my only concern.
Okay. I have just, I think it's worth a, just even if it's a handful of spaces for the convenience of residents that live there for guests to be able to come, because that's, that's a problem in a lot of, a lot of communities where the homes are packed together and there aren't really sufficient driveways. So I don't see any harm in it. And typically, parking on one side of the street is going to have a positive effect in traffic calming anyway, which makes the road safer rather than less safe. So I think it's a good idea to just do it.
So, will you move forward?
I will make the motion on the, on the agenda to prepare an amendment to Chapter eleven dash one-point-three-one and advertise a public hearing at a future meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to second. I'll, I'll mention that's Chapter Eight, not eleven.
Did I say Chapter?
Yeah. Okay.
I just have one question. Will you do this? Will there, we'll get a picture, correct, of how this is going to work?
I can, I, yeah, I'll provide you with a drawing of where the signs would be placed, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, no? Okay. Next item up, Blue Spring Onclade Preliminary Subdivision Plan.
On June twenty-sixth of this year, staff received from Pantera Engineering a preliminary subdivision plan that proposes a development of seven building lots on a four-point-five-eight-one acre property at four-oh-five West Main Street. The property presently contains a house that is proposed for demolition as part of this project. All lots propose public water and sewer services. Three reviews of the plan have been completed, the third of which as well as a plan sheet were included with the agenda. There's a plan on the board. The plan on the left on the board is that plan. The number of comments remaining from the third review is within the range as acceptable for inclusion on the Board of Supervisor's agenda. Most of the remaining comments should be able to be addressed in a timely fashion. Staff's recommendation is to vote to approve the Blue Spring Onclade Preliminary Land Development Plan contingent upon, excuse me, it should be subdivision plan contingent upon satisfactory completion of all comments from the August twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-five letter of the township engineer, the September two, twenty-twenty-five letter of the zoning officer, and John Sepp from Pantera Engineering is here to answer any questions.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this? Please.
Hi, I'm Roy Love. I live at four-oh-four West Main Street. First time I've seen anything about this. I guess I'm not paying attention, but I guess I wasn't paying attention. I have met with the, the builder. The Leggits were our neighbors for many years. Mrs. Leggett proposed to Harris Township that she would like to have this property preserved. We talked to Harris Township. I don't know what happened to it four or five years ago. But, you know, the property was sold. You know, it's, it's, looks like a decent development plan- plan. I would hope that currently, we're looking at, talking about traffic calming in, in Harris Township. Speed humps on College, on, on West Main Street, and, or somewhere. We're now going to add seven more houses, probably six at least car travel trips coming out of here. We have a whole new gentrifying community, from older community to a younger community with young families. It's, I think it's across the board, everyone would like to have more traffic calming, particularly on that end of the street, on Academy. I know you're doing studies of that. I hope that progresses, and, and maybe this will be an impetus, to, to move in that direction. Cars start moving very fast on our street, and this is going to be an additional bunch of cars, coming out of this new development. And, just in closing, you know, Harris Township's a lovely place, and, as you know, Bruce, I was involved in Open Space Planning Committee, and Convention Committee Chair of that. Sooner or later, the township has to say, enough is enough. Like, do we need to have every pocket turn into another seven homes? I guess it can, because that's how it works, but, you know, soon, if every single pocket becomes more homes, we might lose the character of Bollesburg that everyone loves, and that's what I hope doesn't happen. I think they're going to do as good a job as they possibly can with this development. I'd like to see less homes, but they can do what they can do. So I just wanted to make a statement about that.
We have an opening on the planning process?
For an alternate desk.
Yeah.
Just one comment, Mr. Love. The reason, if I remember correctly, when, when Mrs. Leggett, we had no access to the property. In other words, her house wasn't leaving at that point, and we didn't have an access point, if I remember, that's why we declined that, if I remember correctly. Because we couldn't come in through Blue Spring Park, we couldn't come in through the mansion, so her house was the only way to come in, and there was, and that wasn't going to be part of it. So the access is what, I think, why we turned it down. We didn't have access.
Yeah, I thought it was just going to become part of the, the park.
No.
Okay.
That was, because you had the wetlands in between there.
Yeah.
That was the issue, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have something to say on this particular topic? From the board? Anybody?
I'll just, I have a couple of questions. Todd may be able to answer, or John Sepp. The, the paths that are currently encroaching on the one lot, I, in our drawing, they disappear and reappear, and I wondered how far in they actually go, and how they might be realigned, because apparently whoever built, whoever constructed those paths, locked them past, weren't aware of the exact property boundaries between the Bull Mansion property and that property.
I don't, I don't know if John has any specific answers to that question. Feel free to step up to the microphone if he does. Our understanding is that the property owner has expressed an interest in relocating those paths off the property.
John Sepp from Penn Terr Engineering. Rich Burkett is the developer, and he's here with us as well. Our plans do show the paths being relocated, but they've already been relocated. I guess the volunteers went out.
Were you met with the Bull Estate?
Can you step to the microphone, please? Thank you.
I met with the Bull Estate Board approximately two months ago, just to try to be a good neighbor, to, to, to meet with them, let them know what our plans were. We had a very nice meeting, we informed them at that time that one of their paths did encroach on one of these lots, and they subsequently relocated the path, and blocked off the one that was on, that was encroaching on our lot.
Okay, thank you very much. Could you identify yourself for the record as well?
Rich, Richard Burkett, Singular Construction.
Yes, I've said this before, will I say it again? Once zoning is in place, encoded for a piece of property, we can't justify changing that midstream. Someone purchases a piece of property, they purchase it with the understanding that it has this development potential. And so we can't take that away. So it's important for people to get to the meetings, and we start talking about zoning and zoning regulations. We make those decisions upfront, before we're presented with something, where maybe, making no comments on what this is going to look like, but just in general, if we get presented with something, we don't have a lot of options. We have to follow the rules that we've set up. So, please, get involved.
I'll add to that. It's not necessarily the our rules, second-class Township Code dictated by the state of Pennsylvania, and so a piece of property in a certain zoning area, and we can't just spot-zone and say, oh, we don't want anything on this, so we're going to have a little pocket of forest zone here that nobody can build on, or the parameters are more difficult. So, just, we do zoning by areas as best we can, and that, I mean, zoning map has pretty much not changed for decades. I think when, when, when the supervisors decades ago decided that we needed to actually do zoning, I think they did a pretty good job of it. And you can't cover every situation, but with this particular lot, everything meets the standards.
Okay, I hope we have a suggested motion here in the agenda?
I'll move that motion.
A second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay.
Can I ask a question? To follow up on what you just said?
Sure, please.
Yes, okay. Diane Farr. Okay, you brought this up last month also, and so I want to make sure I really understand, are you saying that, I mean, that when a property is under consideration, the first step, is it the Planning Commission, or is it, you know, the Board of Supervisors? In other words, you're asking us to get involved, and I'm asking, what's the first step? That's all.
And I'm saying, get involved, not about that particular piece of property.
No, no, I don't care that. That's fine. I'm just talking about, I'm talking about the same thing you are. What's the first step?
The, it depends on the type of plan that's submitted. If it's a situation like this, where the developer has to go through a preliminary plan stage, and then a final plan stage, preliminary plans are first reviewed at the Planning Commission, then they come to the Board of Supervisors. So this plan was already on the Planning Commission agenda last month. Once this plan gets approved, the developer will submit a final plan. That comes directly to the Board of Supervisors.
So involvement, and following up with Dr. Love's comment, we should be looking at the Planning Commission, the planning agenda for the Planning Commission, if we're interested in knowing what's going forth.
If it's one of those types of plans that goes to the Planning Commission, yes. In this particular case, I know we, as staff, heard from several of the residents on West Main Street and some other locations, that they heard rumors that this was occurring, but didn't know anything more than we did, until something was finally presented to us. So it, it's perfectly acceptable, when you hear something may be happening in a neighborhood, give us a call and find out what we know.
Well, we know that there's going to be thirteen houses built on Main Street, off of Main Street. So it's just, I was just asking, it sounds as if there's an exception to this rule. Is there an exception, or does everything go to the Planning Commission first, and then to you all?
I think what I just explained to you is, if it's a two-step plan, it goes to the Planning Commission first.
I got that.
If it's a one-step plan, it skips the Planning Commission, comes directly to the Board.
Okay, thank you. And the other thing, may I just ask one, the other thing is, I thought we were going to be having the, when land development's being discussed, it was going to be broadcast so that everybody in the room could see it. In other words, that plan would be up here. We would be able to see it, as opposed to sitting in the back and looking at it right there. That's all, that's my comment, that's all.
I have a question for you, if I may.
Sure. Yep.
I don't, I didn't really understand your question about the planning process. Are you asking if, you know?
The sequence.
Yeah, the sequence and all, so, are you asking, it seems, it seems like, you know, once the, we have our ordinances, we have what you can and cannot do. Are you seeking to change that?
No, I'm just looking for, well, are you asking, what we've been talking about is adding, as you said last month, there's got to be something between zero and a harb. Okay, so that's why some of these things were brought up, and, in reference to new builds. That's all. So that there's some content, some design standards, that's all. It's a long way down the road, probably, but it would be nice if it were here sooner.
We have talked about in the past, that if we did it, the only place we could actually have a harb would be in the village district, because of its historic nature. It would be very, it would be way too cumbersome to, to have a harb that covered everything, and that particular property is definitely out of the village district.
Right.
The zoning district.
No, that sounds, that sounds great. That's a good place to start.
I mean.
Especially since there are going to be some changes in sort of the business district.
We, we are, we are looking at a small area plan that includes a village, and what we might do about that, but that's kind of a long, tedious process, and the Planning Commission has been looking at that.
Okay, let's move on to the Tibbetts Site Plan.
In early July, staff received a site plan for an elevated deck construction project for a property twelve twenty-one Linden Hall Road. Now, the property is located within the FEMA floodplain, although the project is proposed in a peripheral layer as such. The project was discussed with the applicant and township engineer prior to site plan submission to clarify the existing conditions on the property, and the applicability and requirements of the zoning ordinance. The site plan proposes a one-hundred-and-fifty-one-foot-by-five-foot trench to the rear of the lot as mitigation for any disturbance the deck construction might cause to the floodplain. This idea was vetted and approved by the township engineer. Two reviews of the site plan have been completed, and all comments except, except required signatures have been addressed. A copy of the site plan was included with the agenda. Following board and staff approval, the site plan, zoning and building permits can then be submitted to complete the project. Staff's recommendation is to move to approve, and sign three copies of the Tibbetts Property Site Plan.
Comments from the audience? Okay, up here. I'm kind of waiting for Frank to get back, but I guess meanwhile, I can entertain a motion.
I move to approve the site, and sign three copies of the Tibbetts Property Site Plan.
I'll second it.
Okay. Move in a second. We'll give it just a minute. There should be some intermission music. All right. All right, well. Yes, we do. We have a motion. In a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay, let's move on. Where am I? Here we go. Okay, Lingle South Minor Subdivision Plan Sewer Facilities Planning Module.
On May twenty-third of this year, staff received from Penn Terr Engineering a minor subdivision plan that proposes the creation of five lots, plus a residential lot from the one-hundred-and-twenty-eight-point-three-five-three-acre Lingle property in Linden Hall. The property is located outside the public sewer service area, so a sewage facilities planning module is required for on-lot sewage plan. Such has been submitted and reviewed by township staff prior to submission to the Department of Environmental Protection. Staff has determined that the module meets local planning requirements. Staff's recommendation is to move to approve Resolution twenty-five dash twelve, adopting the Lingle South Minor Subdivision Plan Sewer Facilities Planning Module as a revision to the Center Region Act five thirty-seven Sewer Facilities Plan.
I'll move that motion. Second.
Okay. Anybody out there want to address this? Comments from the board? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? That passes. Lingle South Minor Subdivision Plan Official Map.
At the July fourteenth meeting, the Board of Supervisors discussed the Lingle South Subdivision Plan and relevant facilities depicted on the adopted official map. At that time, the board expressed an interest in improving connectivity to K Wood Park from Linden Hall Road and nearby neighborhoods. Penn Terr Engineering recently submitted a revised subdivision plan that proposes a one-point-five-four acre area that could be purchased by the township to provide connectivity from K Wood Park to Linden Hall Road and the Rocky Ridge Development. This proposed parcel runs along the western boundaries of Proposed Lots Two and Three, and along the southern border of Proposed Lot Three. If the Board of Supervisors are interested in pursuing potential acquisition of the property in accordance with the official map, an appraisal would need to be ordered. The township cannot pay more than the appraised value of the property, and I will, for the sake of everyone present here, pull up the map that shows where this is at. Can I borrow the pointer? So, this here is Linden Hall Road, running here along the northern part of this subdivision area that they're proposing a subdivision in. You have K Wood Park is down here, this is the K Wood North Estates development, and down here is Rocky Ridge. So this green area is that one-point-five-four acre piece of land that is shown on the current proposed subdivision plan, that could be purchased by the township, and used to provide a pathway to both Linden Hall Road and down to the Rocky Ridge Development.
Comments from the public? Questions? From the board?
Why are we buying it? Tell them, tell them to give it.
Make it park space and give it to us.
Yeah, and it's not clear.
Well, there's lots of things that aren't clear, but, you know.
No, but I mean, it's not clear that it's, it's suitable for building houses on.
Township, in this particular case, there is no required parkland dedication for this development, since it's in a rural district, and they're not proposing a residential development. There's a few residential lots under the Conservation Design Standards, I believe are exempt lots. So in this case, they're not required to provide parkland. So for them to give it to the township, they certainly could, but they're not required to, and having spoken with John Sepp, the property owner's consultant, they were interested in potential sale of the township.
They will offer him a buck.
Well, the question at this time is, do we want to get an appraisal? Sure, I mean.
Okay, if we don't do it, what's going to happen?
Yeah, what's, what if we don't do it?
I believe if you decide not to pursue a facility that's on the official map, and the development moves forward, at some point, that facility is supposed to be dropped off of the official map. So your opportunity to acquire the facility is when the development is proposed, that's why that was brought to you back in July. So if for any reason you decide not to move forward with considering it, or eventually purchasing it, purchasing it should we get an appraisal, at that point, I don't know that we could go after acquiring it again, unless the official map was readopted with a different facility being shown.
So it's just this, why is that?
I believe it's about twenty feet wide down here, which would be wide enough for us to put a, a pathway in, and this area up here is larger, I think there's some steeps, maybe some slopes right here that would allow. And then this area up here is larger. I think there's some steeps, maybe some slopes right here that would allow us to get down the road. Um, it's wide enough for a path. That was what the board indicated you were interested in was connectivity. Normally 20 foot wide easements, or in this case, an actual deeded property would be sufficient to do that. If you recall, the official map actually showed the parkland being extended to all of this area as well, but you did not, uh, have an interest in acquiring an additional 11 or so acres of park.
Actually Jerry's staying here. Has he got something he's going to tell us?
I'll just add, when we did, um, K Wood North Estates, and we talked about taking their storm water down through to Cedar Run. Uh, at that point, the planning commission wrote Linden Hall Road is a designated bike route. I know that it's not a fun road to ride a bike on for most people, but it's a designated bikeway route. Um, and in Rocky Ridge, you do have areas of paths that are going in. You have bike paths that are designated to go into Rocky Ridge, but every time we see a new section, there's a little bit of flexibility to where that may land. So thi- this isn't a one-off out of nowhere. It does tie into the official map. Uh, it will bring some K Wood North Estates back up to the park without cutting through other people's yards. So, um, when I first saw it, I was a little, same expression you have, but then there, there are some reasons why, um, you know, I, I don't think as an appraisal, a 20 foot strip of land may be prohibitively expensive either. So, uh, it does have ties to various areas that may be worth it.
I'd also point out, our official map was updated in 2022, and it was the result of a lot of public input. And this was one of the facilities that was highly ranked as having connectivity from K Wood down to Linden Hall Road. And the other connection that goes over to Ro- uh, Rocky Ridge actually was shown on the previous official map. It was adopted back in 2008 and was still considered something that people wanted to have.
I guess we get an appraisal then.
I think that would be a good idea.
So we can make a decision one way or the other.
Okay, let's get an appraisal.
Okay, I'll go ahead and have that ordered and then, uh, discuss it with you at a future meeting.
Okay, next item up is, let me check, I shouldn't skip anything. Is, um, potential zoning amendments related to short-term rental regulations.
So over the past several months, the Board of Supervisors discussed the development of permit or licensing regulations related to short-term rentals. Staff continues to work with special counsel in revising the draft regulations, which will be included on a future board agenda for further discussion. Regardless of the final content of any short-term rental regulations, the township's zoning ordinance will need to be amended to define and permit short-term rentals in applicable zoning districts. These amendments would include adding a definition for short-term rental to the terminology section of the zoning ordinance and amending the permitted uses table for applicable zoning districts where short-term rentals will be permitted. Zoning amendments need to be submitted to the township's planning commission to provide the commission with the opportunity to submit recommendations back to the Board of Supervisors. These recommendations could be considered as the Board of Supervisors continues to work on drafting an ordinance related to short-term rental uses.
Okay, so, and, um, yeah, let me, let me offer two comments. And one is, again, this, this applies only to changing the definition in the zoning. It doesn't apply to an ordinance that we are working on. Two, um, we are going to be meeting, we've hired outside counsel who specializes in short-term rentals. We're going to meet him with that individual, have him look over what we're doing and try to steer us away from making any real blunders. So, with that being said, is there anybody wants to, please?
Hi, Kim Hamilton. I'm a resident. I live up on the hill. Um, I just wanted to speak in support of the framework that you have listed in terms of finally getting an ordinance in Harris Township. Seems like we're the only ones in the surrounding boroughs and municipalities that don't have one and sort of have a vacuum here for people who want to make investments and do the short-term housing. And, you know, everybody's going to come here because they really don't have any regulations that they're going to have to follow. Um, about a year ago, I'm going to say, we got a, a short-term housing rental right next to us. Really, you know, everybody's close together there. It's a pretty cohesive neighborhood. We have, um, pretty, like, uh, mostly small families have lived there in the past. I've been there for about 40 years. So now we have, um, the place is listed on, you know, Airbnb. It says, you know, eight to 10 people there. There doesn't seem to be any, um, restrictions in terms of how long you can rent it, that sort of thing. Um, you know, it's not something that, you know, it's been so loud, we're going to call the police about, or it's been out of control. But it does change the nature of the neighborhood. Um, we had some people renting there, oh, for about a month recently, outside a lot. Um, again, they weren't being out of control or anything, but it does, you know, when it's happening, people out in the back at 12 at night, having heated conversations or just having fun, it does impact, you know, the surrounding areas. So, um, I kind of looked at that. I looked at some of the, uh, what the other, uh, like State College, um, Bellefonte Borough, Ferguson, um, they all seem to have something. The one that's in the framework doesn't seem to have anything that's more restrictive than those that have been, um, I think, working for the other municipalities. So I know there have been people who have complained about it and have maybe, um, really, I think I read that, you know, somebody was saying they were going to sue or whatever. But certainly it doesn't seem to be any more egregious than anything else. And the fact that we don't have one, I think, is attractive to people who just want to make the investment. So, um, again, as a long-term resident, I just hope that, uh, we're able to keep the kind of nature of, of the communities that we have now. Thank you.
I, I will reiterate that, um, we're seeking outside counsel, um, both because there's potential for a lawsuit, but also because we kind of want to get this right.
Makes sense.
And again, our, our, our agenda item today is simply to, uh, have the planning commission look at the, um, the terminology and such.
I get a, um, on the, on the back page, this sentence, "Staff recommended that township consider permitting short-term rentals within the districts listed, as well as the cultural district, but prohibiting them in other districts where dwelling units should be, are not permitted."
Yes, that should be.
Not permitted.
No, they are permitted, I'm sorry.
Wait.
So.
District General Commercial?
Our General Commercial District does permit.
Residential units.
Okay.
Um, but our General Commercial District is essentially confined to Discovery Drive, where you have like the Nittany Personal Care Home, Energy Cap. It's all offices and commercial space. It didn't make a whole lot of sense to necessarily add that as a permitted use in a district where they wouldn't likely ever be developed. Residential office also permits, uh, residential uses. But general industrial does not permit any residential use. So those would be the districts where they would be prohibited. And that is, you know, subject to the board's discretion. That list that I gave you in the ordinance or in this memo is from what I gave you back in May. These are where the units that we believe are being operated in the township are located now. So certainly if there are districts where you don't feel they're appropriate, that's something you could identify. But what we had recommended based on what the board had said was at least those districts where we know they are likely being operated today.
Okay. Frank?
Yeah, um, the only thing, I, I, you know, I'm assuming we're sending it down to the planning commission, but do we need to add instructions, like if we sit through with the solicitor and we get this ironed out? Like I'm, I'm looking at the numbers, you know, the, the consecutive days' numbers, the how many a year. We do all these numbers and get them with the solicitor and the planning commission comes back with, they want to change all those numbers. I, I, I just want to make sure we have instructions that, that those type of things, we're going to be working with the solicitor.
Well, certainly.
I guess is my question.
We can let the commission know that. Commission also provides a recommendation. It doesn't mean that the board necessarily has to follow that recommendation. So whatever recommendation they provide, if they recommend changing numbers or what have you, that's entirely up to you in the end of what you put in the final ordinance.
I didn't want us, you know.
Understand.
Arguing back and forth or sending stuff back and forth.
Understood.
Want to make sure, but once the solicitor, we get it ironed out there, that, that, that's pretty much going to be the blueprint.
Well, Frank, i- i- to be honest, the, the language in the draft ordinance that you've seen so far is not really in the purview of the planning commission.
Okay.
This is the only part of the draft ordinance that would be in the zoning ordinance. So that's the only section that the planning commission can really have any input on.
Yeah, it's the definition of the districts where they would be allowed.
And are they advertising, or have we talked about short-term on the planning?
It'll be on their, yeah, it'll be on the agenda, just, if anything else, then it'll be, be on the E update. The folks will be aware that, that this particular piece is being discussed, just the zoning part of it, not the licensing, uh, that the board's working on.
Okay. Does that require a?
Yeah.
Yeah, motion here?
I move, we move, we send this document to the short-term rentals, to the planning commission for re- for review of potential recommendations.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Okay, MS four. Township engineer, uh, Jerry Northridge is here tonight to speak a little bit about, uh, MS four update. Do you want me to read the agenda language, Jerry, to kind of introduce what you're going to be talking about? Or do you want to just take it from here? I can pull up the PowerPoint.
I can take it from here if you have the PowerPoint.
I'll have that.
We'll move through this as, uh, quickly as you'd like me to, and then you have me slow down when you'd like me to. As you're aware, this has been underway for six and a half years at this point. Um, MS four is your stormwater management in the township, um, how we manage that stormwater, how we maintain quality with that stormwater. Five years ago, you completed what was called a pollution reduction plan that itemized out certain projects that you would complete to improve some stormwater. Um, one of those key projects was the Military Museum Project. That fell through. Other projects have come up. So this is your home stretch. We're, we're here. So go ahead, Mark. Um, like I said, 2019, this all got started. There was a lot of sharing between College Township and Harris Township as set up in the original plan. Um, since then, the Howzerville Project, what was the Rockenbeck Farm, was purchased by Clearwater. It's becoming their new headquarters. So that's really opened up opportunity there. And then in Millbrook Marsh, Trout Unlimited received a large, um, windfall of funding, $400, $500,000 that they've put into stream bank restoration there. And we petitioned DEP to qualify that project. They agreed in 2024. So that's taken a lot of capital costs off of your plate. So your first project, go ahead, Mark. The Willowbrook Basin, um, you remember back in Phasic Park, we did some analysis. We improved the infiltration, uh, back there. We modified the outlet structure, put in a new outfall pipe. And this was funded by SRBC with a 95.5 grant. They paid 45 grand. We paid five grand. There's no additional O and M costs incurred by the township. You were already paying to mow it. You'll continue to pay to mow it. Uh, but they covered all those capital expenses. There might be a few dollars left in the kitty to plant a couple more trees, uh, but this project is functionally complete. Um, you gained 6,000 pounds towards your 42,000 pound credit, uh, with this. Go ahead, Mark. Up at the top where you see 1601, this is the Rockenbeck Farm. It's becoming the new Clearwater property. And in the center of this is an area on the north side of the Spring Creek. That's Clearwater property now. On the south side is College Township Parkland property. So because both three banks are owned, they have a riparian buffer planted out there, funded by Trout Unlimited. Not, no cost to municipality coffers. Um, your share of the annual O and M cost out there is about 250 bucks. Um, that covers spot spraying and replacing a tree every now and then. Uh, originally you had a capital investment of $6,000 identified. That was all covered by grant. You had no further commitment there. So, um, as far as this goes in your packet, you'll see College Township has already executed agreements with Clearwater for maintenance out here, and you are essentially buying in for your percentage of what College Township is committed to out there. Um, this project can grow further east. Um, the whole, the property owner to the south has not, at this point, expressed any interest in having riparian buffer permanently on their property. But if they would ever acquiesce, um, and consider providing that property, this could expand here on the east side. So, go ahead, Mark. On the west side, I call this the triangle, this property. As of right now, in the Clearwater headquarters design, they are looking at a trail system in this area. So you are going to have enough credits from other sources. This is available as a future bank, but we're not going to take it at this time. We're going to let this ride until we see if we need it, um, go forward. So this, the piece there is not in your project. Go ahead. The Duck Pond Birm, this was originally a Penn State College Township Ferguson Township project. Uh, Penn State determined that they did not need as many credits from this project as they originally thought. So that freed up more credits for the balance of the community. Penn State is not charging anyone for routine maintenance on this project. The risk here to Harris Township, College Township and Ferguson Township, as well as the university, if we got a Hurricane Agnes and it blew this thing to pieces and just wrecked it, the reconstruction of it, Penn State would be asking for everybody to pitch in their share based on how many credits they take from the project. So if you would go in for about one-third of College Township's credits, um, you would take about 10,000 credits out of this, and that would expose you to about a $50,000 liability if there were an extreme event, or 20, 25 years from now, if it ever needed replaced. This is still fractions of what we had budgeted to do these projects. Um, and it, Penn State led the way. They kind of laid these credits out there first and kind of, they were the first guarantees. So, um, it's my opinion that Harris Township should be participating in this project. So go ahead, Mark. And then the last project, um, Millbrook Marsh Trout Unlimited has been installing about 4,000 feet. I've had this detailed out. About 4,000 feet of stream bank stabilization riparian buffers, um, back in the area. The first 1,200 feet are ineligible. Um, the next 3,000 linear feet, when we talk about six participants, we are not including Spring Township. As an MS four partner, they're out on their own. They are not part of the, um, original six. So the 3,000 feet that are left divided among the six participants, everybody would get 530 feet of stream bank to manage. Um, it would functionally give, give Harris Township about what they need. Um, we know there may be complications from UAJ's Put-in-Town project coming through. We know Clearwater has complications from a path. So when you add up all these credits in aggregate, you're creating a bit of a slush fund for yourself. So that if 5% get pulled out here, 10% get pulled out there, you're still compliant, you're still covered, and you're still well below all the budget dollars that have been laid out. Um, we've also not received our next MS four permit, so we don't know what the next cycle is going to demand of us. So we're, we're doing a little bit of banking with this, so that completed projects that have functionally not cost us anything, we're locking up those related credits. Go ahead, Mark. With Millbrook Marsh, they next meet, um, we're in September, September 18th. So at that meeting, we'll be presenting the revised contracts. They did not have a quorum the last meeting I attended. Um, and we're trying to get to a finalized document, so that's also in your packet. September 30th is the due date that I sign the report, Mark signs the report that goes to DEP that says we have functionally met our obligation for the projects we need to do. All of your projects are constructed. They are all funded, constructed and in place. We are just dotting the i's and crossing the t's on these contracts right now, um, attempting to hit this September 30th deadline. If I have motions from Center Region Parks and Rec and from Harris Township and College Township that everybody is on board and playing in the same pool, that satisfies what I believe we need for September 30th. Um, we have not unfortunately received the letter of the law of what the next five-year cycle is going to require. We think it's going to target basins. We do not think there will be much reward on stream bank stabilization projects in the next cycle. Um, the permit that came out back in March, there were over 1,500 comments made statewide about people that were unhappy with it, um, including our own, the fact that they don't actually measure whether any of these things really work. Um, but until we know what's in that next permit, my recommendation, while these credits are available, is take them. And then all these contracts would have out clauses. If we sit here three years from now, we don't need them. And then all these contracts would have out clauses, if we sit here three years from now, we don't need them, we can give them back. So, go ahead, Mark. We're diversified, we've got stream bank stabilization credits, we've got basin credits, we've got this Duck Pond Birm credit. You'll have your surplus. As far as capital investment, I believe the original budgets, Harris Township was looking at paying between 70 and $85,000 for their credits in far as capital projects go, you're going to come out less than 10. And then you have in here some draft sample agreements, these of course have to be presented to College Township Council as well, but the goal here tonight is to have consensus among this board that these are the projects we've got, these are the projects we're going to go with, these are the partnerships we're creating, and we'll advance from here. So, do I have one more slide, Mark, or is that the last?
You have your thank you slide.
Thank you slide, for any questions, yeah, anyone can always feel free to give us a call.
Well, thanks for keeping us out of trouble.
This is, with the complaints by the Willowbrook residents about the area, have any impact on this?
You're referring to the basin itself?
Yes.
So we've had, yeah, we've had some folks who have reached out, Jerry, I don't know if you and I have talked about this, they don't like the vegetation in the bottom of the basin.
It's not, just, it's the invasive pear trees that they don't like. They said that they're fine with the basin and being kind of like a wild kind of thing, but they don't, they didn't buy into having a forest back there over the base of pear trees. That's what we, that's what I've heard.
So in that basin, they can go. Every individual basin, when people do their NPDS permitting, they either take credits for specialized plantings in the basin, or they take credits other places. And so if somebody takes credit for specialized plantings, then those specialized plantings are required. In the Phasic Willowbrook Basin, it predates those things, they're not required. I can tell you that the new bed tower at Mountain Nittany Medical Center has very complex plantings that have very specific pollutant uptake characterizations, and those plants will be required for forever. The little grass basins in front of Colonial Press can be grass forever. So it depends on when they were approved and what was in that NPDS permit. So if the Phasic Willowbrook Basin has invasive species, or if somebody wants something different, they're welcome to do that. My recommendation with basins, the more cover there is, the more maintenance there is. You want water to infiltrate, so if it's full of leaves, leaves drop, and then that leaf detritus creates a mat that prevents infiltration, now you've got a maintenance problem. If you have a lot of trees or bushes, and groundhogs and rabbits start burrowing into everything, you have a maintenance problem. If you have just grass, you don't have a maintenance problem, but you have less environmental return on your investment. So it goes to when each basin was installed, and it, I mean, that's a Parks and Rec slash Public Works maintenance issue back at Phasic Willowbrook that we can certainly tackle.
Yeah, we're going to have, it's already on their list of things to deal with, I don't know they'll touch it until the winter time, but they are going to go in there and clear out all the Bradford pear trees at a minimum. But I know that that was, I think, put in years ago as a means of trying to provide some wildlife habitat. I know Fish and Boat, when they were out there planting trees, were raving about it, they said they thought it was a great basin because it was helping to slow down the water. But yeah, we're going to get those invasives out, it'll be an ongoing struggle because Bradford pears just keep popping up typically, but it's something we'll keep after, I think they just, you know, kind of got out of control and.
I'm a physics guy, not a biologist, so when we start getting into the, the different types of trees and that type of thing, that's not my world. But I, there are sets of rules that follow each of these permits that go through.
You what?
A black film.
I don't go back in, I don't go back through the summer.
Anybody else have comments? I'll entertain the motion, it's in the agenda.
I move to subject, the subject is staff and solicitor review, move to execute contracts consistent with the terms presented September 8th, 2025, to achieve full compliance with the MS four permit by September 30th, 2025, annual report submission deadline.
Second.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Okay, College Parks and Recreation, Cog Parks and Recreation Governance Special Committee requests for comment.
During its July 23rd, 2025 meeting, the Cog Parks and Recreation Governance Special Committee completed its review of and referred a new draft agreement, which is a CRPR Authority Intergovernmental Relationship Agreement, which outlines and formalizes its relationships with Center Region Parks and Recreation and Cog, and the municipalities to the Center Region Parks and Recreation Authority, and the member municipalities for review and comment. The committee also completed its review of and referred an updated 1988 policy for accepting recreation and park facilities in the regional system to the CRPR Authority and Member Municipalities for Review and Comment. The Parks and Recreation Governance Special Committee requests that municipal comments on the proposed documents, which are attached to the agenda, are forwarded to the CRPR Director Christie Owens by September 19th. Board of Supervisors should discuss the attached documents and provide comments, so that I can provide a response back to CRPR by the deadline. So I'll be happy to go ahead and take whatever your comments might be. I will say, I did already provide some of my own thoughts to the director from a, from the manager's point of view, but.
All right, well, let's, let's go around. You have any thoughts?
Yep, sure, I got a couple. Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to start with Section Four responsibilities of Center Region Park and Rec Authority.
Hold on a second.
And I'm going to look at number B.
Section five?
No, section four.
The responsibility of Center Region Parks and Rec.
No, section four.
Oh, gosh.
Four, four, come on, four. Okay.
It was about the, it was about the organization of this.
It's number B, it says serve as the primary entity for decision-making on significant regional park and recreational facility development projects, capital improvement, and recreation program. Then I'm going to go to Section Five, number A, which is the responsibilities of the Center Region Park and Rec Agency, provide direct operational support for parks and rec facilities, including maintenance, programming, staffing, and facility scheduling. Now, if you did read all those other things, there's nothing in there, and all that, that they get to make all those decisions and tell us what, what they want, there's nothing in there till finance, till you get down to number seven, responsibility to the Center Region participating municipalities. Provide financial and other support to the Center Region Parks and Recreation Authority and the Agency for the Development, Maintenance, and Operation of Parks and Recreational Services. If we're going to be responsible for the wallet, we need to have a say long before it gets to us and say, oh, by the way, this is everything we need. And I think that's been part of our issue over the years, and by the way, tomorrow morning is budget, Cog Budget Meeting, and we will be talking Park and Rec, and I will be saying a few things like that. But that's my, that's the big thing I have on this, I mean, there's lots of things in here I don't particularly like, but I can live with them. But that's, that I don't like, I don't like the idea that we got two organizations making all the decisions, telling us what we want, do all the program, hire as many people as they want, and then come to us and say, here's how much money we want. And by the way, I did do some calculations, getting ready for my meeting tomorrow morning, and for program, which I included maintenance, admin, and the programming, part of the budget for, for the Center Region, the municipalities and our contributions, we contribute 90% of the cost of those programs. 90%, I don't know about you guys, but I think that's pretty high.
Where was the, where was the information we were supposed to be receiving about?
That's the other thing, we've asked for years that we want to see it, we don't get it.
We should be able to see it right now from the summer. We should have received it in.
But that's, that's where I have a problem with this agreement. I have a problem that we don't, we, we don't get to make the decisions, we just get told how much money they want. And that, I don't know how you put that in comments, but that's it.
Tracy?
I don't, you know what, I need a roadmap, I'm sorry. At this point, I need a roadmap, like, I need to know, there, it's just, I read through the whole, okay. I really feel stupid, because I read through the whole thing, and I guess my problem is, is between all the different sections of Rec Park, I, I, I don't know who's supposed to be doing what anymore. Is, I mean, do you see what I'm saying? Does it have to be this complicated? Okay, so there you go, I feel stupid, but that's, that's how I feel, and I agree with Frank, I'd like to have say, I feel like there's not enough say about where money's going to be spent. But I do, the only thing that I do like is I think if, there was one section where they have, they laid out exactly with, with the, um, in the municipalities, the, the parts in the municipalities, what they're responsible for, what we're responsible for, which is something that we needed to begin with, remember we talked about that before? I think that's a good thing, but other than that, I got nothing.
Nigel?
It's the ongoing thing that Frank said, you know, they tell us what they want, and then supposedly we're just footing the bill, and we don't have a lot of say in that. And that's, that's historically been it. Other than that, I mean, it's, it's complicated, and again, I'm not really following Parks and Rec that closely, I'll admit it. But I bet you are, Bruce.
Yes. And I think, Mike, one thing that really jumped out at me is we carve out Parks Capital as the definition and their, you know, and kind of their responsibilities. And I think we should simplify that and have it Cog responsibilities. So we have three entities working here, we got the authority, we got the agency, and we got the Cog. And Cog can make the decisions on whether it should go through finance first, whether it goes to Parks Capital first, whether, I mean, so Cog should be making those decisions in terms of how they want to participate. And just kind of simplify that aspect of it a little bit. So that was my major thought, I do, you know, I keep asking for more about the cost recovery information. I understand that it can be convoluted, try to put it all together, but we, but we need it.
That is, it's garbage, it's so easy to, to really get your cost recovery, understand what your costs are for every single one of those programs. I'm sorry, it's not that difficult.
So, my thoughts.
I, yeah, like I said, I'm, I'm not comfortable giving Mark the authorization to sign this thing. And it looks like we got to sign it, I mean, I think we need, I think we need some feedback on it.
No, it's a draft document, so at this point, they're just looking for feedback, so I don't believe any, anybody's being expected to sign it. And I don't know, at some point too, it might be a, an item on the general forum agenda.
I'm sure.
I don't know if that's going to happen or not, but I thought I heard there, it could be an item for discussion by the entire Cog, since there's a lot about the Cog's relationship in this agreement.
Yeah, I, I think if we're going to, and, and Cog's the same, if, if Cog, we're going to go on the hook for the loans and all that, we should have a little more say on what goes into things, you know, and, and having one rep, you know, unless, unless they meet ahead of time, they go to the meeting and they're just, they're, they're diluted with all the different members that are there, so. I don't, I just don't like the, the system.
I guess the other aspect, Mark and I talked about, I think, was the land dedication, and, and, you know, because we should know going in with a developer, whether, you know, what it's going to cost.
Yeah.
Whether they're going to take it or not, you know, rather than we get down that road, and then all of a sudden we find out, oh, that's going to be on you guys.
I, I, I just, there are things like I don't understand that go on, with like, why can't we have land dedicated to us and not develop it? Why aren't we already talking about things like indoor recreational facilities? And, because it's been in those.
Pretty well died.
No, it was just recently, in the notes that I read, I can't remember, it was just recently put in there, it was in the, it was in the binder.
Oh, the program ziggy?
Yeah. It was in there, and, and they talked about indoor facilities and moving forward, and what was going to be needed by the community, and all this guy said, oh, so they're already putting the, you know, they're letting you have a little taste about where we're going. And I, I just, I felt pushed when I read that document.
They want our money, they better start listening to us, how's that sound? That's a good comment.
Anybody else? Got what you need?
I'll put together a draft letter, I'll probably run it past you, Bruce, just to make sure you feel adequately encompasses everybody's comments, but I think I have enough.
Okay, um, let's see, where are we?
I make a motion, we move to approve the use of the Bollesburg Fire Police on October 5th from 10:45 to 12:30 PM for the Bull City 5K Trail Run. Does that help out?
Second.
You writing this one?
No.
No. Um, okay, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Managers report.
Okay, a few things on here I'd like to bring to your attention. Item number three, last month's meeting, board had discussed some proposed amendments to the township's signed ordinance. Our solicitor did provide an attached review, the proposed amendments. So there's a few little changes that they're recommending that we make, and I just wanted to make you aware of that. If you have any questions about those, I'd be happy to take those at a different time, since it might be a lengthy discussion if you have questions as to why those changes are being made. Number four, I've been having some feedback from folks about whether or not we can take our left turn on Bull Avenue where Shingle Town Road is and make it a flashing yellow rather than leaving it as a solid red. So if you remember, a couple of years ago, it was changed from a left turn yield on green to a solid red, dedicated, you know, green arrow, and now there is, the, the head in the, on that light standard out there actually has the ability to have the flashing yellow, it's just a matter of us turning it on. So it's something I'm happy to look into a little more, but I didn't know if any of you had any concerns with the township potentially.
There were a lot of accidents there, there were a lot of dangerous accidents there. Do you really think a flashing yellow light is going to actually give somebody the perspective of how fast those cars come down that road into Bollesburg?
Not necessarily, I'm not saying that it will. I know our, our traffic engineer, he said that these have been used elsewhere in the region, and that a flashing yellow to most drivers, it does have a behavioral difference from my understanding than a green, left turn yield on green, but.
I like the green arrow because it does cut down on the accidents, and that is a very dangerous intersection. Leave it the way it is.
It doesn't take that long for that light to change.
Yeah.
And it sees motorcycles too.
Okay, and I'll leave it, I'll leave it the way it is, it was, again, it wasn't something I was going to change without doing more research anyway, but I wanted to bring it up to you before I went that route and.
We just, we had, all those.
There's a sight problem there, on both directions.
It's a perception.
It's a speed, a speed perception.
And so, it's better just to keep it with the red arrow and the green arrow, in my opinion.
It's fine.
I don't think we've had a bad accident there since we've had this.
I don't think so, no.
But we were having, I mean, it was happening all the time.
We had them pretty regularly, yes, we did. Number five, in conjunction with the land development plan for Mountain Nittany Medical, the board had asked that the, you know, we investigated establishing a no-left turn restriction at that intersection of Circle Drive and Bull Avenue. Again, our, our traffic engineer looked at that, and he said he doesn't recommend that. Noted there's a lack of reportable crash history and poor sight distance at Beaumont Drive, so his concern was if we move that to no-left turn, and yet people pulling out of Beaumont, we actually might have more of a crashes, uh, issue, making it a no-left turn restriction out of Circle Drive. So that was his recommendation, if you still want to move forward with it, I certainly can. Number six, as a reminder, the board is going to be meeting with the planning commission on September 24th at 7:00 PM to discuss the commission's recommended zoning strategy for the village of Bollesburg. There's an executive summary of the commission's recommendations attached to this report, and there will be additional information provided with the packet for that September 24th meeting. Number seven, if anybody's interested in talking about Harris Township and us being the birthplace of Memorial Day, the Cato convention.
Nigel has his, we have the big gun things, he has that, remember that speech?
They have asked if anybody would do it, so. They'd ask if anybody from the.
What, what, what is the date, do we remember the date of Cato, or?
That is, it's, let me pull up my calendar here, I can tell you. It's the last Wednesday, I think it's the.
That's not the same as the 24th, is it?
No, it's not the 24th, it's not on the 24th. It is on, no, it's on the 30th, Tuesday, the 30th. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going. I think I said I'm going.
I think I said I'm going.
So, yeah, I believe everybody's going, but as I mentioned, Cato, they're specifically doing a township showcase this particular year. They want, you know, members of governing bodies to stand up and talk a little about their township. Didn't know if any of you were interested in getting up and speaking about Memorial Day.
Let Denny do it.
Yeah, Denny would be good. He's not here, he wins.
What would you want to talk about?
Wait a minute, do we want it all night or do we want five minutes?
Right.
Yeah, right? What would you, what, what do they want to hear about? They want to hear just about Memorial Day?
Well, they suggested that could be something that would be spoken about by, you know, do you have, or the birthplace of the national holiday was one of the examples that was given, uh, of something they were hoping might be talked about in the showcase.
I mean, there's a lot of things to discuss about Bull'sburg. It's original stagecoach stop in the area.
Sounds like you'd be good at.
It grows, it grows, of course. It grew so fast, we had to have three different taverns, you know? The Bull'sburg Tavern, House of Gentry, you had the Drovers and the other two and.
Yeah, I think five to ten minutes is what they're looking for, so.
We're like the oldest and the best, duh.
Well, I think, I think our chairman.
Say that, we're just like the oldest and the best, duh.
I, I think our chairman, at the end of his career, why not?
I'll write it all up for you.
Because if I speak, it will take about two minutes.
About two minutes is good.
Okay.
All right.
We got, we got a little bit of time to think about.
Yeah, I'll need to let them know, I think they're trying to get a lineup figured out of who's going to speak when, so if anyone's willing to do that.
Do people know that? Do people know about Bull'sburg? Do they know about?
Sure.
You would think they would, but it's possible they don't. I mean, it's a county-wide organization and.
Yeah, but I would assume they know about Memorial Day, in good grief.
I'd tell them we have, we have our own ski slope and our own golf course. What else you need?
Maybe not details about it.
Well, I mean, there's not much details as, as we're not the official. Well, the official is actually in New York. We were five years sooner than the official.
Why, why it was, we claimed it in the first place as the three ladies and going to the detail about that and, you know, point out our, point out our beautiful statue.
Yeah, they just did a refresher of the three ladies and where they came from and how they did it. You all got to go to the cemetery. You all got to listen. You all open your ears and listen at the cemetery.
Well, we could, we could always say within, within a half mile, square half mile, we have, what, one, two, three, four bars and Bud's Garage. Next, you ready for the?
Last.
I think we're getting off schedule.
Maybe they come up with stuff. Maybe we could all speak. Well, each says, then we'll rotate through.
Let me know, and I'll let the Cato folks know what, what's going to happen. Last thing I was going to bring up was number ten, which is the budget review sessions. Uh, at this point, I was hoping for the October fifteenth and October twenty-second. Denny was the one I wasn't sure about for October fifteenth, and he's not here tonight. But if there's any delays in preparing the budget, I would suggest the twenty-second of October and November sixth. Just want to make sure that those first two dates are still okay with everyone. I'll double check with.
You make them, I'll be there.
Fine with me.
Okay.
I have to go match it up with my calendar. I think it's pretty good.
Okay.
You ready for the next step? You ready for the next step?
Yes.
Okay. I move we approve voucher number two oh two five dash eight for the amount of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, three hundred and twenty-three and twenty-three cents.
Second.
Give you a lead on the first. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, motion passes. Committee reports. Executive Committee does what the Executive Committee does. Uh, Parks Capital Committee met with the authority and basically looked at these, this first step of these guidelines that we saw here tonight. What else is on there?
Governance.
Parks Governance. I slept through it.
Real interesting, huh?
No, I mean, I think you got it bad.
Oh, that slept through it.
I had the same problem.
Okay, uh, Human Resources.
Okay, Human Resources met last week. The only item really was a proposal to switch from a reimbursement, self-insured reimbursement program for dental and vision and go to an insurance company to get slightly better coverage, no reimbursement. In other words, the employees before had to pay upfront and then request a reimbursement. This would just be covered then. And it's not very, it's not much more expensive at all. So that's going to be recommended to the general forum, I assume, this month. And climate action sustainability did not meet.
Okay. Finance Committee.
Oh. Uh, we, we had, we met after the last meeting, but mostly we're getting ready for the budget meetings. They start in the morning. I think tomorrow we're doing cog admin and park and rec. Uh, one starts at eight-thirty and the second one starts at ten. Uh, then there's some on Thursday, and then two next, next Tuesday, there's two, and then the following Thursday is the final. Right now, I got the, the chart, I should have brought that with me. I got the chart today, five point eight, I think was the, the number that we're at right now, uh, before they start, we start playing with stuff. But I think right now we're around five point eight. Now, there is one good thing. I did see, and I, and I have to ask this question tomorrow. Admin, we're saving seventy-five thousand dollars for accounting services. And I, if it's what I think it is, I think it's because we just put that, bought that new package last year, and it's, should all be up to speed. It, it will definitely take over the twenty-sixth, or twenty-twenty-sixth. And I think we're going to see some substantial savings there. Uh, State College Connector, still nothing going, coming back, not a lot. Uh, and they had a meeting recently on every, the additional comments. They're, they're going to tweak it for a while. We won't see anything for another six, eight months. Uh, MPO meets the end of the, seventeenth of this month is when we meet next. That's all I got.
Okay, Facilities.
Hell, I wish you were sleeping through that one. Um, but I did check, um, the agenda, and it was really not that hefty of an agenda. Uh, public safety, I found interesting because, um, Lifelink came and did a presentation and actually came forward with the amount of money they want. So I think it was, what was it, a hundred and twenty-five thousand? Was it a hundred and twenty-five thousand? Yeah, yeah, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars they are requesting from the municipalities. Okay, so they come up with this list of everything that they need done, and they put it up on the board, and all of a sudden, like the, I mean, it's very much a cheerleading section in public safety. And, um, of course, they've got the problems with, if the big beautiful bill passes with insurance and all that stuff going in there. So, um, immediately, all of a sudden, they want to jump to an action item and put it in front of the cog to talk about. And I, and Mark's comment was that Lifelink has to come to us anyway to discuss what they want for us to allocate money. I don't know, like, I don't know if I'm comfortable with all this. I have a lot of questions, um, for Lifelink. I have a lot of information that I'd like to know before, I think I would like to, um, put money out to them, because there are a lot of things that never get asked. And things like, what's their response time? What's their average response time? I don't even know that. Um, I, I have no idea why, um, in certain areas, where was I? You know, in like Pittsburgh and in, I was up by Erie. They have, um, their fire company houses everything. They have the ambulance, the EMS, and the fire company, and why we're separated. And you had mentioned before, Frank, about them fighting over funds. So I really don't know all these, the answers to all these questions and the development of this. And before, I would like to even consider dedicating funds from this township. I think there are a lot of questions that have to be answered. Just how I feel about the whole thing. But they wanted me to, I asked them to wait a month before they decided to do anything because I wanted to present it to this board.
Well, I think they need to do it before a month, because in a month, we're going to be talking about our budget.
Well, they're not going to be able to get this, they're not going to be able to get this into the budget this year anyway. So. And I'm not, I'm not comfortable with it as it sits, so.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, have any, anything else?
I move we adjourn.
That'd be awesome.
We adjourn.
Yeah. What are you going to do when I'm not around?